Good evening, everyone. Today, March 19, 2024, at 6:00 P. M. I call for order. Please join me to the pleasure of the news.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vocal, Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Aliaga?
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasurer Brown?
Here.
Trustee Morocco?
Here.
Trustee Alamothu?
Here.
Trustee Ritchie?
Here.
And Trustee Tetter?
Here.
We have four.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any board public announcements? Any board members would like to... I have something to say. I'm gonna give you a couple updates here. First, there's an update about the report that we have done a couple weeks ago, a couple, yeah, I think almost a month. So, for the public and the Board of Trustees, I wanna let you know then the developer has reviewed the report prepared by the township engineer, Nocan Frous. The developer engineer is working with the township engineer on a solution. The engineer is currently reviewing the new proposal outlet for the drainage pipe prepared by the developer engineer. Once the review is complete, the developer has agreed to do the correct measures to restore the pipe to its previous condition for the next 30 days, hopefully the water permit. Also, I have been requested by, last time by Trustee Sam Morocco to make a presentation about this report, which I don't have any problem with that. I want the public and the Board of Trustees, I mean, I don't have nothing too high or anything, so I will make sure that I will work with the staff to get it in the next board meeting to have a presentation. So, if any of you guys, any of my fellow Board of Trustees have any questions, we can ask those questions about that, okay? All right. Secondly, I have another update. As you see during the news, Chadiff Bouchard has been talking about some of the break-ins in Oakland Township, Bloomfield, Bloomfield, in the south of the Way County. It appears as illegal immigration coming in, breaking into some houses is very concerning about that, and I wanna be proactive and reactive. For the last couple months, I have been working with Lieutenant Rich Cummings and see what we're gonna do. And thanks, I'm very thankful that I have my dad, who is a former FBI commander of, from Peru. He's retired now, but he gave me good advice. I took his advice seriously because my dad dealt with those issues before back in Peru. I mean, I know it's very concerning about M-18, the pandilla, what is called the guerrilla, las albatruchas, and all these people crossing the border, and we don't know how many of these people are here. But again, we don't have any problem. Everything is good in Independence Township, but I wanna be proactive and reactive. So, I'm gonna be bringing very soon a package to the board. So, you guys take a look at the presentation with some suggestions, and I think should be improved, because I take very serious our public safety, and I'm gonna be again proactive and reactive. So, I wanna give more legal weapons or infrastructure, better infrastructure to our sheriff department to do their job, and I think it's something that I will recommend to the board to support me. But it's gonna come in the next, maybe in the next board meeting or the following. Thank you. I don't have much to add. Anyone else? Okay. All right, moving on. Public comments. Anyone that would like to address to the board for five minutes? Anyone online that would like to address to the board? This is no forum or debate. This is public comments. Anyone would like to come on? No? Okay, moving on. We have a public hearing. We have presentations and report. Consent agenda. We have a request to approve the Board of Trustees' regular closed session meetings, minutes of...
I'd like to amend the agenda.
Sure.
I'll have to check, run and move it to item number K?
Okay.
For discussion, please.
Sure. Number K for discussion, okay.
Didn't we already approve the agenda?
Yes, we did.
Oh, we did, right?
Yeah.
So...
This is the consent.
There's the consent, though.
Well, it's part of the agenda, so I thought the agenda was already approved.
Then, I think we already approved the agenda, but Trustee Morocco would like to amend something in the consent agenda. So, we can do that, right? I think so.
We've had this discussion before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we're not, we're at the consent agenda right now?
Yes, and Trustee Morocco would like to move something from the consent agenda to business.
Yes.
Trustee Alamato disagree with that. She believes that we already approved the agenda, so we shouldn't be doing that.
Yeah, the approval of the agenda is the entire agenda, which includes the consent agenda. When you come to the consent agenda, it's allowable for a trustee to remove it from the consent agenda.
So, we can do that?
Yes.
All right. All right. I need a second for Trustee Morocco petition. If somebody in the board would like to say, okay?
Can I just get verification on which item we're removing?
Item two.
I didn't hear that. Okay, thank you.
One second.
Okay, so, Trustee Jem Tetter, second that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, okay, number two, all right. So, since we're moving number two, I will move number three. Request to approve 2023 Community Development Block Run, CDVG, Public Service Contract, and Springfield Township. And number four, request to approve Brady Lodge Rental with Alcohol, June 1st, 2024. And number five, request to approve out-of-state travel, Independence Television Station Manager. I need a motion to approve the...
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, as amended, okay.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Carrie, that was moved for, all right?
Number two.
Number two is moved in the beginning, all right?
Number two, yeah, down to K.
All right. We're gonna discuss number two, which is request to approve for the March 12, 2024, check run including ACH, oh, 700,000, 700,006, 766,123 dollars, ratified March 20, 2024, a payroll of 321,276,164 cents. Okay.
So, I've had, we've had some, I brought up some points and discussions about, and I wanna be careful we don't get too deep into this thing here, about the ordinance and prosecution contracts we have. I did try to dig into it and requested a copy of the invoices for the month, so I could kinda see what they're working on and justify the overages that we had last year in it. And this might be something we wanna decide to take up in closed session to have a, you know, more in-depth conversation about the contract, but it does have, it was identified that it did have a typo in one of the contracts, and that needs to be rectified. Whether we stay with it, we don't, I think there's some, legally, we should identify that we were aware of it, and we're gonna just make the correction or accept it as is, you know, and change the typo on the expiration date. If that's what the board wants to do, that's an option. My thing about tonight is on this, is that on the invoicing that's provided to us, it doesn't have any, there's no information of what's being worked on, or what it pertains to, or who was talked to, or what, you know, and, you know, so there's 25 days of invoices for the month of February, but it doesn't specifically say any details on anything that was, that was part of it. So, I don't know if there's other documents that are more specific, and those wouldn't wanna be discussed here. So, that was one of the questions, trying to agree with the billing. I'd like to, you know, I wasn't able to get the information that could, you know, that would really give me much to go off of, so.
Absolutely.
Carrie's got an answer.
Yes.
Yeah. That's confidential information. That's why that part's not included in, because of dockets and, you know, people that are involved in prosecution. So, I believe Supervisor's office has that detailed background stuff. My office doesn't have that. I'm not, I mean, I could get that, but I'm sure you can get that from Jennifer Jose.
So, it'll break down what each of the billings are for?
Yeah. It'll show all the different executions and time spent, I believe, so.
Okay, that would be helpful for sure. And then, do we, does the, I don't know what, if Jose, what your intentions are to put the contract thing to rest, you know, to...
Sure.
Now, I know that Carrie shared the minutes with me that the intent of the board was to extend it. It just didn't get conveyed in the paperwork, so maybe that's a clerical thing, but it's a board decision to
Sure.
to do that, I think, 'cause we're the ones who would be the ones that facilitate that.
Sure, but, okay, Carrie?
Can I comment to that as well? I think Trustee Morocco, unless the person that we're in contract with or Jose and I that signed it have any discrepancy against that, I think it would just stay as is. I think Dan could probably back something up on that, give us a comment on that. But I think that the legality and the legitimacy of the contract still stands unless there was some, if somebody refuted it, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with that. The motion was for two years. The contract terms haven't changed. It appears there was a typo of one year. Mr. Morocco is trying to clean that up and make it a two-year contract, but since the motion was for two years and both sides have agreed to it, I think it's an enforceable contract in that regard.
Okay.
That, now, I haven't looked at the contract. Actually, Mr. Morocco just asked me about this in the hallway, and what I said is, many times, these contracts will have rollover paragraphs that say unless terminated, it rolls over on a 30-day basis. People are familiar with leases on that. I don't know if that exists in this contract, because I haven't looked at it. But either way, the motion of the board was for two years. If the pricing is the same, I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay. Okay. Sam, I will follow up with you. Let me take a look at the contract. I'll follow, follow with you. Sounds good?
Yeah, with the details of the billing?
Yeah, yeah. I will follow up with the details, okay?
All right.
Okay, we're good. All right. Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Carrie. Okay, moving on. We have to approve this, yes, yes, yes. Okay, I need a motion for, Sam, you wanna make a motion?
I'm moved to approve the March 12, 2024 check run, including ACH amount of 766,123 dollars and 20 cents, and ratify the March 1st, 2024 payroll of 321,276 dollars, 64 cents, for a total amount of 1 million 87,399 dollars and 84 cents.
Support.
Okay. All right, support by Trustee Tetter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Okay. Moving on, we have our partisan director today, actually, our deputy, Lisa, can you come from the podium, please? This is about the magazines we do every, every few months, and then...
Good evening, everybody. So, I am here tonight for the Parks, Recreation and Seniors Department, who went out to bid for our 2024 and 2025 magazine publication printing services. We received six bids on the project, and our recommendation is to continue our relationship with EP Graphics, who has successfully printed and mailed our magazines since 2016. So, they came in at a bid of 15,029 dollars. The bid will cover, the agreement will cover six publications in total, three in 2024 and three in 2025. So, if the board has any questions regarding this contract, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any question from board members? Trustee Alamato?
One. Is this already laid out and kind of ready to go? Like, are you using the new logos already and everything?
Yep, the new logo, so our next publication will be our summer guide, which we're in the middle of proofing right now. We just received all of our final logos files, so we're sending those to the designer now for swap-out, and this will hit households in mid-April.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Sam, any questions? No, no, you guys, all right. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid received from AP Graphics for costs associated with the publication of the 2024 summer and 2024 fall, 2025 winter-spring, 2025 summer, 2025 fall, and the 2026 winter-spring magazines, next six publications, at an anticipated amount of 90,174 dollars, at 45,087, 87 dollars annually, and associated distribution costs based on actual costs and quantities, and direct the township supervisor to sign the acceptance of the bid as the authorized representative of the township.
Support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I believe the first one I have, the first MAP is for the CPAP-BIPAP ventilators for our four frontline rescues in the township. This is to replace what we had as portable disposable ones before. But this new machine is actually, does more functions, and it provides a better care, better outcome for our patients. There's only one other vendor that provides this type of machinery, but they were three times the cost, and Zoll is a very good company, and that's who we've used before for other equipment. So, this was a budgeted item for our 2024 budget. So, as you see, we're looking to get approved 62,430 dollars. That's for the four ventilators. But then, we also need a service plan, which is 21,906 dollars. It's a four-year service plan to keep the machines maintained, up to date. They break, they fix them, so it's just to keep the machines going for us, so we're looking to get approval for that.
Okay, any questions from board members?
Just a quick question.
Clerk Newbeck?
What's the amount of time you think that they'll last? What do you anticipate outside of that four-year?
I guess I don't know that for sure, because we've never used this exact machine before, but we're hoping that it obviously lasts longer than four years.
Okay.
So, we'll probably have to renew the service plan.
Had any reference from anybody else that's used them before, and...
As I stand here tonight, I don't have that information, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Jim?
No, I was just having the same question, 'cause the service plan is about 33% of the cost of each unit, and it almost, you know, if these are items that have a shelf life of four years, it seems like a...
I can only kinda compare them to like our defibrillator, our monitors, like cardiac monitors that we use for years. We probably get 10 to 15 years out of those, and we have service plans with those. This is a similar-looking machine, but it's smaller, and it does the ventilating. So, I can only assume, 'cause Zoll, if anybody knows anything about Zoll, but it's a very good company. So, I can't say with any certainty, as I stand here, how long they're gonna last, but I would assume they last more than four years, so.
Okay, so you're hopeful that these will be 10 or 15, will have 10 or 15 years of useful life?
I would, I would venture to say so.
I mean, I would say you have to replace some of the attachments and so forth by device themselves.
Especially with the service plan that keeps them running well and running good, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Yeah, chief, is that, the service plan, is that something that every so many months or so many uses by law needs to be recalibrated or fixed? You know, I mean, what would they be, it's a lot of warranties, so like, what, is it annual, biannual? Like, how often do you expect to be?
It's annual, and then if there's anything that breaks down in between the annuals, then they come in and fix them. Any accidental breakage, that type of stuff, anything that maybe is not calibrated right, they'll recalibrate it. So, we have that access to call them in, but there's also gonna be annual preventative maintenance on these machines.
Is it like a bumper-to-bumper warranty with, with insurance, kind of, that they take care of everything? Or is it a routine, excuse me, routine maintenance?
I don't know. I don't have that answer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Ron? No. Any other motion?
I'll move to accept the quote from Zoll Medical Corporation located at 269 Mill Road, Chelmsford, Massachusetts, 01824-4105, for the purchase of four ZVent portable ventilators and accessories, and the amount not to exceed 62,430 dollars, and authorize the supervisor sign as the representative of the township.
Support.
Key?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. So, Zoll Medical is a tier-one supplier of cardiology equipment and a lot of medical equipment. Typically, these things are bought through, through companies that, you know, represent Zoll. So, I think because we're a government entity, we're allowed to go directly to Zoll. The pricing's better than, you know, I would typically see. In my, in my private sector life, I was at a medical distribution company that sold this equipment. So, we would have marked this up a lot more than it is. I just thought I'd make that point, that we get good government pricing direct from Zoll.
Correct.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Carrie. Chief?
Thank you. I believe the next one's gonna be the Stryker Power Cott.
Sorry, excuse me, we have to do part B.
We have to do part B.
Oh, part B, sorry, sorry.
It's okay.
I'll move to accept the quote from Zoll Medical Corporation located at 269 Mill Road, Chelmsford, Massachusetts, 01824-4105, for the purchase of four Vent worry-free service plans in an amount not to exceed 21,906 dollars, and authorize the supervisor sign as the representative of the township.
Support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chief? Yeah.
So, the next one should be the Stryker Power Cott. And what that is, in any of our rescues, we have a power cot, power load system that raises the cot that the patient's on from the ground up into the rescue. Obviously, that helps our firefighters not have to lift patients up and down all day long, protects their health and safety. So, we have a new rescue that's coming in May of 2024, and this will be the power load system that will go in that particular vehicle. All our other vehicles do have this exact same system. It's a proprietary system. There's no other one out there in terms of power cots. And additionally, excuse me, when we bought these before, prior to me arriving here on Independence, the township did receive some RAP grant money as a reimbursement on these power cots that is still available. So, once we receive this power cot, then we will try to get a RAP grant that will help pay a portion of it. So, and I think it's approximately 25,000 dollars that we can get through a RAP grant.
Any questions? Any comment? Sure.
Yeah, I guess anybody that doesn't think this is necessary for any reason, they should go on a run with you guys and lift somebody into the, to the ambulance, because once I watched that a couple times, I was sold that, you know, we definitely want these on all of our vehicles.
Yeah, absolutely, and it's even when we're in a house, and they have a heavy patient, and get the patient on, and then it's a power system to lift the cot up for them, so they're not manhandling all these people, so.
I've gone on one run where they had to get the people out of the house, and there was a lot of manual lifting and shoving to make that happen, so.
Exactly.
So, I think these are good, good things to have in our equipment, so.
Yep.
Okay. Trustee Tetter?
Yeah, I, no, I agree. I mean, for, for the reasons stated, that this is necessary equipment. I was just curious, this seems to be like tires on a vehicle is something you want as part of the complete package. Was there, was this just something that was an oversight when the capital, again, this precedes me, so I invite any of the board members to state as well that this wasn't included in the fire department capital improvement plan at that time, was just something that was overlooked? Or are these always kind of addendums to those purchases?
So, this was an oversight on the purchase of this vehicle. It should have been included from the day one on the purchase, and it was not, so it was an oversight.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, any other motion?
I move to accept the quote from Stryker Medical located at 1941 Stryker Way, Portage, Michigan, 49002, for the purchase of one Stryker Power Pro XTMTS system in the amount not to exceed 58,198 dollars and 16 cents, and authorize the supervisor to sign as representative of the township.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion B?
Motion B to approve the 2024 budget amendment, number four, as presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next one. Chief?
Sir, thank you. And the last one is a resolution from the county in regards to our hazard mitigation plan. We fall under Oakland County's emergency management plan overall for Independence Township. We work under their auspices. So, this is a resolution renewal, so that we can, again, follow what they're asking within the resolution, especially the five points on the second page that we will follow and abide by. And most importantly, by signing this resolution with the county, it ensures that if we do have some sort of major disaster in Independence Township, that we have access to FEMA funds, federal funds, to help the township up in that time. If we don't have this resolution, then we're not privy to those funds, so. It's important that we do sign this and stay within the hazardous mitigation plan with the county.
Okay. Ron?
On point number one, on the, on the second page, it says adopt in entirety the 2023 Oakland County Multi-Terror Disaster Plan. Is that 2023 the correct date?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna make sure it wasn't supposed to be 2024.
No, they just got it out to all the communities the last month, so we were just received it. So, it's for the plan of 23, and we're now, we're gonna adopt that.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Any other motion?
Move to adopt resolution number 2024-004 as presented.
Okay.
One second.
Okay. It's a roll call, so.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamothu, yes. Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. As we talked at the last meeting, I was with a couple trustees, about the road mileage. I don't know if you guys see, I sent you, all of you, it was an opinion by the Califarm about the road mileage and all that. So, just to give you some notes here about that. So, since October 2022, nothing has, nothing has been done. You know, we tried, I was on point with my predecessor to see if we're gonna be refunding those, those funds back to the residents, but it failed. It was before Jim and Sam was getting the board. So, I was working on some ideas with the county, with Rick. We asked the county to see what we can do, if possible. Some ideas, some of it is, one of the ideas can, after several months working with the RC, OC... after several months working with the RCOC, with the road commissioner, was that maybe they wanna pick, they're looking to see what are the roads they need the most, and pick the number one they have the most needs out of all of them. And one of them was Parview, according to, it's number one, it's number one for, is Parview for RCOC, because it's a court, it's a cut-through road through, from Dixie to Andersonville. Also, I mean, it's other roads as well, but they believe this one is the one they need the most, according to RCOC. Whether we agree or disagree, this data come from the county, it's not coming from my office or anyone else. I know everybody will disagree, maybe with that, I don't know, some people will agree or disagree. But it was picked by RCOC as the number one. I mean, we have, according to, I checked with Rick, we have enough money and to do this, and the county is willing to contribute with this, with the engineering cost and fifty percent of the designing engineering. So they will pay hundred percent with engineering cost, construction engineering, and fifty percent of design engineering. So the township also will pay hundred percent of the construction cost, but that's already what we have in the last over. We have enough money to do this, if we decide go that way. So also, we have the opinion, like I mentioned before, we can also put some money for gravel, if you guys don't wanna go through with this idea, or also, at some point, Paul has some other ideas that maybe can work. It was brought to my attention, maybe if we wanna do, maybe put some money in SADs to help our residents. It's other options, but this is recommended by the county, I wanna bring it to the board, and I wanna have a direction from the board, what the board wanna do. But this is what I have been working with Rick, and that's what I have right now ready to go. If the board believe this is the, the direction they were gonna take tonight. If not, I would like to add some ideas and some directions. But since October twenty twenty-two, we have waiting for this, for something, and our residents will like to see some action. But I wanna see if the board have any input or any direction for, for us now. Anyone would like to go see? Treasurer Brown?
So first of all, I think we, we need to think about putting money into residential streets. There are lots of residential streets in our township that are in terrible shape. And to me, taking two point five million dollars and benefiting sixty-six single-family homes on Parview, and then there's two hundred and twelve apartments and a couple of commercial, a senior living building and a medical building. You're really, the greatest amount of that benefit is going to, really, the apartments. And it's not going to benefit of, of the apartment renters, it's going to the benefit of the owners. And I just feel like dumping that, taking all that money and putting it into that road disenfranchises all the other taxpayers that paid in the two point nine million. One other thing I wanted to point out about the idea of giving the money back, because I do believe everyone really thought that is, would be the best thing to do. We had extras, we should give it back. There's a couple of things to point out about giving it back. You take about twenty-four percent of it right off the top, so north of six hundred thousand, and it's going to big corporations, DTE Energy, all the apartment complexes, the big ones in the township, and multiple other businesses. So you see, the top, the top forty or fifty taxpayers in the township are businesses. But I promise you, DTE's not gonna lower anybody's electric bill if we give them back that money, and the people renting apartments aren't gonna get any of it back either, just because we refunded it. Ultimately, the idea of refunding, we'd be required to give that money back to whoever paid it in the year it was paid. So we'd be looking at figuring out, going back all those years and each year, saying who paid the tax bill. And you can imagine administratively how complex that would be, in addition to the fact that people have sold their homes. So now we're trying to chase down people, and if someone's died, well, which of their family members did? It would be almost impossible to do that and not spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to try and do it. Relative to what I think are the best ideas, and I would, I wasn't in the meeting with the road commission, because I would have tried to get some information regarding what I think is important here. We have a couple of very dangerous intersections in the township, really three, for me. White Lake and Dixie, Deer Hill and Big Lake, and Mann and Clintonville Road. To me, that's where this money should go, and working jointly with both MDOT and the road commission to get them to pony up money. Insignia, who is building the apartments on Mann Road, they've already, they've already agreed to pay twenty-five percent. So understanding from the road commission, what are the costs of these three projects? And could we get all three of them done with this money? We'd ultimately be using them on primary roads, and to me, it gives the greatest benefit to all the residents versus a very small area on a residential street. And fixes a long, long-term project, a problem we've had with those intersections, especially Big Lake and Deer Hill, because they're now starting to develop that property there at the corner. So this is the right time to try and look into that. So I, my suggestion is, let's get with the road commission and MDOT and find out what that cost and how much they'll contribute towards it, and figure out where we're at.
Okay, just, I wanna clarify to the board again, I'm sorry, maybe English is my second language. I says, I'm not asking what we cannot do, I asking, I want a direction for the board, what we can do. That's all I wanna hear today, ideas, that's a good idea, and I like the idea, but I wanna like to, to get ideas, what we're gonna do. I mean, this is something I presented to the board to open the door for a discussion, I'm just asking for direction. What we can do with this money, that's all I wanna hear today.
Sorry, did I say something other than that?
No, no, no.
I thought I just gave you three ideas.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah, all right, anyone else?
That was my understanding, that he did provide, one, Treasurer Brown provided one, one option. I really think it's important that we look at the ballot language, and while there may be a lot of legal options for us, I don't think we should do anything with this money that would otherwise defy the spirit of what the voters supported. And if that, and I do know at the very least, without looking at that language, that language was in and around very specific primary roads within the township. We just had a meeting two weeks ago with the road commission, asking for additional funds. As, as we all know, townships pay, pay road, township residents through their taxes, pay for roads to the county, and they pay for roads through the state. Townships are not, do not have the burden to, to manage and collect funds for roads. So we have to be really careful, in my opinion, that we are doing anything outside of the scope and the spirit of what that ballot language provided for. Because while there may be a lot of legal ways we can spend this money, I don't think we should do anything that would otherwise defy that.
Of course, and we have an opinion from Cali firm, then I check with all of you about what we can do with the money.
Right, that's what I'm saying, though, there are a lot of things we can do with the money.
Right.
But the, as stewards of this money, and I think it's a great problem that this, these funds are growing, because there will be a time that the primary roads that the residents paid for are gonna need fills, and they're gonna need patching. So if nothing else, we have an opportunity to have a fund that is dedicated to keeping those primary roads on par with what the residents expect.
Jim, you maybe in favor to create a subcommittee here with a couple of members and start working on it? I probably brought good ideas, maybe we can have a subcommittee and work on it?
And I would also say, I think, you know, Treasurer Brown brings up another compelling point, that twenty-five percent of this money is going back to a very small number of taxpayers that aren't residents, residential taxpayers.
Right.
And so I think that's a compelling point that we should consider as well. While I, I think my first, on first blush, let's give this money back. We're getting seventy, you know, residents aren't getting the full bang for the buck, if you will.
Right, no, I understand, and, and we talk in the DDA, we have to speak to the DDA, they was talking about intersection away Lake and Dixie, so we try to work with that as well. So the DDA maybe be able to take care of that. So it's a lot of options, but that's why I think if we can get a subcommittee, maybe, that we can get a couple of members and talk about this, that will be the solution. I just bringing this to open the door, to start having some ideas and, and, yes, trustee Morocco.
Um, I think that, you know, Paul's idea with intersection improvements would fall in the guidelines of what I think the intent of it is, and I'm definitely, um, wouldn't be in favor of paving a private road with the money. Certainly, all in, if that was going to be the case, I think that it would be, I would be more in favor of subsidizing SADs spread out over the township of the biggest cut-through roads and some, but the people still gotta pay for the bulk of it. But maybe we could contribute enough that they could get the fifty-one percent vote needed to make it an SAD. So we haven't been successful subsidizing our SADs to the point that it gets people to agree to do them. But maybe if we just had a little bit more and that dispersment number was down, it could make an improvement. Because no matter what we do, we're still having a problem with the, with the neighborhood roads and cut-through roads and the affordability of the residents living there to wanna have an SAD. So we could maybe fix twenty roads with this money, opposed to us typically giving fifty thousand dollars per SAD. That's never seems to be enough to sway the residents to wanna participate in it, to fix their own road. So that would, looking at, from that point of view, I'd wanna look at it at a broader scale of, how much would it take to really get people to put, to, to pull the trigger? My other concern would be is, we got ourselves in this mess because the county didn't maintain the roads that they were required to maintain, so we had to step up and maintain the roads for them. Well, as fast as the roads deteriorate, when's the next millage coming? When are we gonna have to pony up another millage? The roads aren't gonna just all of a sudden not deteriorate, and the county's not all of a sudden gonna have the money to maintain the roads. So I look at this as, this is just one millage of many, many millages in our lifetimes to back up the county with the insufficient funds they have to maintain the roads that they're required to do. So I'd like to know what, what is that maintenance program? How long are we looking before the roads are so bad that we gotta have another millage to bail them out? And, and that's, that's important, because if it's gonna keep happening, I would be more, if that's, if we could get the, the county to agree that, that's, I mean, it's just common sense to me that that's gonna happen again. Um, 'cause the roads weren't that old that we repaired for them, uh, then maybe we need to, the thought of having this accumulate, become a maintenance fund, um, you know, do we have to become our own road maintenance body, collecting money and equity off of this balance as our starting point to, to have that? Like, we gotta throw fifty grand at the gravel roads, are we gonna need to throw five hundred thousand every year at the county roads to keep our paved roads right? So without that data, knowing what the next anticipated failure is that would trigger enough anger in the residents to pony up more dough, I think we need to have that information going into the subcommittee, I think we need more information on, I think, what Paul mentioned. I think that the DDA should focus on using the tax dollars, now it's just the tax dollars of the people in the DDA, to work towards the road improvements on Dixie Highway and White Lake Road. Mann Road's not gonna have that ability, 'cause they don't have a DDA. So it wouldn't be an even split, but we could, I think that we should not use this money for that intersection, 'cause we've implemented a mechanism that could potentially solve that intersection's problems with the residents that more, more widely use that, that section. So those are just some immediate thoughts that came in mind.
All right. We can follow up and create a subcommittee and start working on it. That sounds good, so we, I guess we can table these, I mean, we, okay, Ron?
I'm not tabling yet.
Okay, sure.
Get my pitch.
Okay, no problem.
I guess one thing we can do is when residents talk to you about roads, is quit acting like it's the township's responsibility, 'cause it's not, we don't own the roads, the Oakland County owns the roads.
I know.
Yeah, so quit telling whoever you're talking to that we're gonna pay to get the roads fixed. 'Cause we're not, we're not doing it.
Sure.
And any residential road that we participate in with the, with the Neighborhood Road Improvement Fund or any other method, is still gonna be primarily funded by the residents or the occupants of, of those homes. That's the way, that's the way it works. And even in, multiple times in your MAF here, Oakland County, the road commission in Oakland County, says that they're not gonna do anything that's gonna step on the toes of SADs and, and the people that are supposed to fund those, so. So quit, quit telling people that you're talking to that.
I don't know to, can you provide the name?
You're just saying, you're just saying that you, you opened the whole thing here saying, I've been talking to people and they want us to do something with the roads.
Oh, yeah, no, people come to me and ask me, hey, when you guys, after trustee Morocco brought it up, they, what's going on with the money they have in there? I asked for opinion, to then Kelly provide the opinion to you guys. Yeah, sometimes people ask me, but I'm gonna play by the rules of the law. But I don't know which people exactly, I mean, when people come to me, to my office or send me an email, you know, I have to read and reply.
When residents come and ask about the roads, then you should explain the SAD process to them. That we can, we can help them pay for it over time, they don't have to pay for it all at once, and we'll help facilitate that, so. But unless the residents are gonna be the majority of the, of the participation in the program, fixing your road in front of your house isn't gonna happen, so.
Okay.
I did, I did that on my street, paid for it over time, and that's the way, the way it works.
Okay.
As far as the money that we already have collected, it's growing. The money, uh, there's plenty of projects even on the roads they're doing, like on Sashaba, all the, like, Michigan left-turn lanes and the curb-cut aprons on Sashaba between Maybe and Walden are in terrible shape. You go, like, even in front of the school, Pine Knob School there, the, the road there has deteriorated very badly. So I mean, it'll probably cost you more than a million dollars just to fix, uh, repairs on Sashaba during that one mile stretch, so.
Sure.
So I mean, there's, there's plenty of money, there's plenty of opportunity to spend this money on the roads that were already designated for the money to go to, so. And, you know, these are, these are repair items as opposed to new projects like the intersections or whatever, so.
Sure, that's why I asking for a direction for the board, would you like to be in the subcommittee?
I'd be glad to be on that.
Thank you, all right, Ron is gonna, okay, good. Yeah, I just asking for direction. I know that, we, I wish we have enough money to fix all these problems, Parview, Sashaba, everywhere, I wish, but there's no that case, unfortunately. But my, our will, and I believe it the will of all of us, is we wanna help our residents and do the right thing, so. That's why I asking for directions, thank you.
I just wondered if you're gonna go to the public on this at all?
Sure, Treasurer, Treasurer Brown?
Uh, one other, one other thought that I, I neglected to bring up. Um, I'd like to get an analysis of what we've gotten from our Waymaster. And for those that don't know, we have an Oakland County sheriff deputy who's a Waymaster, who I think spends a lot of time driving around the township looking for overweight trucks. Overweight trucks are the, are our biggest problem, especially in residential areas. Everyone knows how many trash haulers you have going up and down your roads, and they do tremendous damage. And I'm curious as to what's happened to that revenue stream? Because our intent, when we brought in that Waymaster a number of years back, was to start giving fines to the overweight trucks. And I would appreciate if you would, you were sort of responding to what I'm saying by saying, mm-hmm, and it's super distracting for me.
I'm so sorry.
That's all right, I, I know you didn't realize, but it would help.
Okay, all right.
So I would hope we can figure out how much revenue's being brought in by the Waymaster, whether that's gone down, what the reason is, because I can't imagine we have less overweight trucks. Just wanna make sure that resource is, is being used to its best. That, we take money from that to fund the Neighborhood Road Improvement Program. So we wanna make sure we're maximizing and, and getting the people who are overweight. Maybe we can get more money into the Neighborhood Road Improvement Program that way, and then find ways to increase the amount we're willing to contribute from that program. But I don't, I don't know the numbers, so hopefully we hit those numbers.
Just make sure we capture as much money as we can.
I can bring the numbers, I give it to you guys before.
Appreciate it, that's all.
All right. Okay. Okay, anyone from the public would like to say something about this? Aaron? No? Okay. So somebody would like, I, I believe we know, we're gonna table it, I believe that we're gonna be moving a, for a subcommittee, okay?
Do you wanna just set up a subcommittee?
Yeah, Ron is gonna be, yeah, I probably, we need two more members, I believe, because you can be for it, okay? You wanna be, Jim?
Sure.
Okay, Sam, you're gonna be in the subcommittee?
If you want.
Okay, three, is okay, you guys okay?
I'll make a motion to appoint trustee Ritchie, trustee Morocco, and trustee Tetter to a subcommittee to evaluate our options discussed at the meeting tonight relative to the two point four million dollars we have available from the road knowledge.
Okay, I second that, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Going on, thank you, guys.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, uh, my first item that I have on the agenda tonight is for the approval to purchase a couple of van- to purchase a couple of vans for the Department of Public Works. Um, part of the 2024 DPW budget was to purchase two, um, all-wheel-drive vans for, uh, the Department of Public Works. Currently, the, the vehicles that we have right now, um, are inadequate for the employees that these are going to be assigned to. Uh, to be specific, more specific, so facilities and operations technician and our, uh, one of our water treatment operators. Both of those job titles require them to have tools on hand, material on hand, parts on hand, and quite frankly, a, a pickup truck's not getting it. Uh, you know, you can't have your tools outside in bad weather, um, it just, it just, they're going to have to jump in the back of their trucks to get things. So we just made the conscious decision in the budget process, is the budget, uh, money for the purchase of two vans, all-wheel-drive vans. Now, just through a little recap, if you know that we've been, uh, leasing vehicles in the past, we looked into that, and it's just not, it's not even close to being, you know, economically smart. It's just, there's just no way. Because, uh, the market, as we know, the use of the vehicle market right now is just crazy. Um, purchasing is the way to go, we own these vehicles, and we don't have to give up and go through that exercise, because the residual value now is, would be just crazy at the end of a five-year lease. So we did budget it for this year, uh, we did budget 70,000 in water and 70,000 in sewer for these two vans, and, uh, we did get through State of Michigan pricing, um, they're, they're Ford, uh, vans similar to the one that we had emergency purchase, um, I think it was last winter, when we had an employee get, uh, his vehicle totaled due to, uh, being in an accident, um, when he was, when he got hit. Um, the vans work out great, they work out really good for, uh, staff, and, uh, what we want to do is get, uh, permission tonight to buy those two vans, um, and they came in under budget, which is great, which is also a wonderful thing. Any questions or anything like that?
Any questions?
One quick. Are these, are these vans already set up on the inside?
No, we're going to take some of the stuff, we do have some, some shelving inside, um, you know, we, it's, it's relatively cheap that, uh, to get some shelving, we're not, you know, it's not like a mobile office or anything like that, where, you know, it's more just some racks that we can put in there, and we can get those, um, quite frankly, we can get those stuff, some of that stuff on Amazon, that is good, that, that separates their material, that keeps their, or, um, their truck organized. There's a lot of parts and, uh, and tools and things like that, that, but we have not budgeted for that, but we do have money in our equipment, just our basic equipment, uh, budgets for, that should cover that and outfit the vans correctly.
Anyone else? Treasure Brown?
Um, I don't see anything in here to dispose of, of what we're doing, you going to bring that back after?
Next item. The, uh, the, the kind of coinci, this, this, this purchase right here coincides with my next agenda item.
Both, both disposals are listed on the next one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, I saw the other two, so.
Okay, anyone else? We good? Somebody would like to make a motion?
Is allowing the Township Procurement Petty Cash Credit Card Policy, Section 2, 1.6, Cooperative and Extended Purchasing, move to accept the quote from Lunghammer Ford of Alaso, Michigan, and authorize the purchase of two 2024 Ford Transit 250, medium roof, all-wheel-drive cargo vans for a do-not-exceed amount of 113,350 based on competitively-bid State of Michigan Contract Number 071B770180, as presented, and authorize the supervisor to sign the purchase agreement on behalf of the township.
Support. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Hello.
So I broke this up into two MAFs instead of one-on-one, putting everything on one MAF, we've been really busy, so. Excuse me. The next item that I have on here, so this is the purchase, a new purchase, a new, uh, three-quarter-ton pickup truck for the Safety Path Superintendent. So to kind of intertwine the two MAFs, this is needed, because we, we, we need to do is, we need to have vehicles in DPW that we own. Uh, like I just mentioned a few minutes ago, that we've leased quite a few, quite a few, but we need to own some. And what we do with those, we rotate the vehicles and we keep the best old vehicles we have. Those vehicles get moved down into CEES for Seasonal Help, Safety Path, um, Seasonal Help for Safety Path, and Seasonal Help for Public Works. That they have a vehicle that we own that they could drive, we're not going to lease a brand-new, you know, $40,000 pickup or $50,000 pickup truck for seasonal help to do. But what we do is, we have to rotate the vehicles out. So, to answer your question, Paul, the two vehicles that the, uh, previous MAF, the employees, those are going to be rotated into the Safety Path or Department of Public Works that we own to upgrade those vehicles. Those vehicles that we're going to get rid of that are currently on this MAF that we're talking about now, as you can see in the pictures, um, they still have some residual value, because regardless, you wouldn't believe what price goes for for garbage, right? And we consider garbage. So one of the vehicles we have.
eBay.
They'll be coming.
We get crazy money on eBay, don't we?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, you know, one of the vehicles has, like, you know, Fred Flintstone brakes, you know, there's, there's no floorboard left, but there's still value to that vehicle, a lot of value, but it's not safe for, you know, we don't want to put, um, you know, summer help and seasonal staffing vehicles that are not, and they're not safe. We got to give them something that's decent. Vehicles that we're replacing with these two vans are going to be rotated down, and we're going to get rid of the oldest two vehicles that we have in, in, in the department. Now, to do that, the Safety Path Superintendent, we're going to replace his truck and purchase a new one, so we can rotate the vehicles. So it's a big shuffle of vehicles. This was kind of an oversight, I will have to admit, on my part, when I did budget, it's not a budgeted item, it's going to require, um, a budget amendment to make this purchase. It is through State of Michigan contracted pricing for the Chevrolet dealership, because we try to keep, trying to keep our fleet with one brand. I wish locally, they would, you know, we could do that, but they're not in, they're not in the, um, State of Michigan pricing. They don't bid on it, I've talked to the dealerships for Ford and for Todd Wenzel, and they're like, it's getting on the state's vendor list to be their competitively bid, it's quite extensive on their part. I was really amazed on the stuff they have to go through to, to, you know, be able to be the state-authorized purchaser, because they give good pricing, so I don't know what they do. Locally, they don't do that. None of the local dealerships do, so that's why the vehicles are not essentially from somebody that's local, right? They're in Michigan, which is wonderful, that's, I guess that's the key thing there. So, we need a budget amendment, and we're going to purchase a new vehicle for Safety Path Superintendent, rotate his vehicle out, get rid of two, and then we'll be set for quite some time. And I think we're going to be in pretty good shape for quite some time. So I know that's pretty confusing, that's a lot to take in right there, but that's kind of, that's what we're, that are playing.
Okay, Trustee Morocco.
What years are we, where are we getting rid of an '04 and an '08? What are we, what are we replacing them with? How, how, how long's the flip?
Actually, one of them, I think, is an '0, I apologize, I don't have those off the top of my head, they are not older than '08, I know that. I think one's a 12 and one might be a 14.
Okay.
And they, and they're in good shape, they have, they've worked good. The vehicles we're getting rid of, they were really starting to cost us, they were really starting to, as they say, nickel and dime us, but we threw $4,000 just into one vehicle last year. It's like, it's not worth it, it's just, uh, it's time to, time to do this. We did talk about this in Safety Path Committee, let them know too, you know, in full disclosure here, uh, we did, and they, uh, they agreed that it was probably a good thing to do this, so.
Okay, anyone else? No? Somebody would like to make a motion?
Has allowed in the Township Procurement Petty Cash Credit Card Policy, Section 2, 1.6, Cooperative and Extended Purchasing, I'll move to accept the, uh, quote from Todd Wenzel's Chevrolet of Hudsonville, Michigan, and authorize the purchase of one 2024 Chevy Silverado, 2500 Heavy Duty, uh, four-wheel-drive regular cab work truck for a do-not-exceed amount of 51,220 based on the competitively-bid State of Michigan Contract Number 071B7700178, as presented. You know, I, yeah, yeah, lost my spot there, hold on. Authorize the treasurer to dispose of the, the two GMC pickup trucks with, uh, associated VIN numbers, and on behalf of the township, and approve the 2024 Budget Amendment Number Five, as presented.
A second.
Okay, motion has been made, and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We now have a closed session, so Communications, future agenda items. Number one, Communication, State of Michigan Liquor License. Number two, Communication, State of Michigan Adult Foster Care Facility. Number three, Oakland County Sheriff's Office, January 2024. Number three, Report of Building Department, February 2024. Number six, Minutes of the Residential Open Space and Backstreet Committee, January 10, 2024. Number six, the Minutes for Information Technology Oversight Committee, February 13, 2024. Board Member Comments? Anyone in the board would like to make any comment? No? Okay.
I just want to confirm and, and, uh, thank you for, uh, having that, finally getting that, uh, report on the next meeting, would be great. I appreciate you doing that.
You're welcome.
Anyone? Just want to wish everyone a happy Easter who celebrates, and for anybody traveling on their spring breaks, that they have safe trips and a good time, and bring back some sunshine.
Thank you, thank you, Trustee Alamato, thank you, everyone. I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.